Meeting for the Data Governing Board. It is nine oh three, so we will get started. Hold on. Um. So we will, oh, so is there anybody from the public here to make a comment? There does not appear to be anybody, not from the Data Governing Board. Um, okay, so attendance. Rom.
Present.
Bob.
Present.
Patrick.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Michael. Ajit.
Present.
Lauren.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Jan.
Here.
Eileen.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
Maura.
Here.
Who's in his absent today and Brian.
Present.
Awesome. We do have a quorum. Okay, so as a result of last Friday's meeting, some changes were requested to be made to the remediation plan and the data matching document, which we shared with you. In order to discuss and vote, is there a motion to approve the remediation plan?
It's almost.
Seconded.
Thank you, Rom and Eileen. Okay, is there discussion? I will first go over the changes that we made. So the one line that we added to the remediation plan, you will see is that it is optional to participate in the disclosure review. It is not appearing as an option to share on my screen for some.
I think I can screenshot share.
Okay, great.
Keep going.
So so you'll see on page two that the language says agencies involved in a request will determine if review is needed for data to be released for a request. And any agency can then notify OPM that the review is required for that request. Is, are there any, is there any discussion regarding this change? Jan.
Yes, thank you for adding the element of optionality. I do want to inquire about the intent of, is this intended to say that like the second sentence, I, or second phrase in that, um, any agency may notify OPM that the review is required for that request? For all agencies in that request or for that specific agency?
I think the language there is for the request as a whole, so the dataset that's being released under that data sharing agreement.
Because agencies can't obligate other agencies to share their data in ways they're not, they're not willing to share it. So I'm thinking the language in this should be modified to say that an agency can request that their own agency go through data disclosure, but that they can't say the whole request will go through it. I don't know how other people feel about that.
So we discussed this a little after the meeting Friday, and I, other folks have comments, I'd be welcome to. We discussed sort of having requests that are partially reviewed and I think felt like that would be administratively very difficult to, you know, have some datasets go through this process and then other parts of the same data request do it through a different process. It just makes the, the whole thing more complicated. So it seemed like either request is either sort of all in or all out for that request. You know, some requests, maybe people feel like that's not necessary or it's not something that they want. But if an agency says, yes, this is something that we feel is going to provide additional assurance or security for that agency to want to provide the option that they can use that for that request, but sort of having the request be kind of half, half reviewed this way and half not, or whatever fraction you want to seem like that was going to be administratively challenging.
Eileen.
Yeah, thank you. So apologies for not having been able to join the conversation on Friday, but I do appreciate that this was added. Excuse me, and I do understand that the more touch points, the more, the greater likelihood of a problem. So I feel comfortable with the, if you're in for review, you are, you're obligating your agency. To Jan's point, I don't think Jan, based on the way that this is tracked, I hope that that would obligate any other agency based on, say, my agency's decision to impact your agency. So if I were to say, yes, I want this dataset reviewed before release, then I would review what I can review, which would not be the, the data key, of course, and then sign off on behalf of my agency. So I don't think it would be a collective approval. If the other agency opts out of the process, then they opt out. Is that, is that a, an accurate understanding, Katie, or? When I, you're right, I cannot obligate any other agency, but I can represent my agency and that portion of the release.
So we were hoping that it would be a collective decision, right? We understand that you can't obligate another agency to share your data, but if the disclosure is the, the step that an agency values in limiting the, the, the re-identification or ensuring that there's minimization of the data being shared, you can't really ensure that disclosure is entirely thorough if you don't have all of the datasets. And so it would have to be a, a group decision. And the concern is that if, if one agency chooses topped out, but it's important to another agency, then perhaps that request doesn't move forward. And then it's just, then the system isn't working the way it should.
Just raise it and raise my hand, but I, exactly like Katie said, I think that's where if an agency says like, we don't want to be part of this process, then you would just not participate in the request. So like, I think that's the, you know, the option. I think we felt like if you're going to do this for a request, you really should be doing it for the entire dataset for the request. But if someone beforehand says, you know, like, we're not gonna, we're not okay with that, then we would just opt out of the request. All of this occurs after you've signed a data sharing agreement, have gone through all of those steps and are prepared to release the data. So there's ample time to sort of say like, okay, this is not something that we think is necessary to, you know, discuss with the other agencies involved in it. Someone says, you know, we feel this is important. Someone says they don't, then come to some determination. But it's not, there's nothing that's obligating you to share or, you know, use data in a way that you wouldn't, because all this occurs after you sign the data sharing agreement. So if there's something that you wouldn't want to do, then you wouldn't sign the data sharing agreement, if that makes sense.
I'm just, I'm not understanding why, so the, the primary objective here is in result of the breach, right, to, I mean, is to make sure that what's being sent between agencies is what's requested. That doesn't have to mean moving all of one's data to OPM and the key file, which is a part of this, for OPM to take and handle and move and, and remove files from. If you, you can do a review, agency by agency, to make sure that the, the files in the, in the, that are to be sent are what they are. You could do it virtually. It doesn't have to be moved. I understand that that limits the ability to then go in and manipulate the data and look at data quality, which I think would be really, I mean, basically we're making OPM another data requister and putting them in that role, which, which means the data sharing agreements have to change before this could even happen. I feel like a much quicker step, a much quicker step would simply be to enable a virtual review. And then you could do that right away for the agencies who wish to have their data, you know, who, who are concerned about their data handling capability. Who want another pair of eyes, everybody, another pair of eyes, you could do it virtually, you could do it right away, you don't have to change MOAs, you don't have to send a key file. I just feel like there are alternatives here. And I just have to say for the record, CSU will never, if something changes in terms of total, I, I don't know. At this point in time, CSU will not be having our data disclosure done. So any request that we're a part of, that people feel that's important, we won't be able to participate. So I'm trying to come up with options here. I put some suggested language in the file. I think it's entirely possible to do a disclosure review, agency by agency, for those who want it, as opposed to obligating the entire request and all agencies to that step and making them at the very end, being like, oh, nope, sorry. We've gone through all this work to get to the request to then finally be the one to like, step back. It's a, it's a lot of pressure. Apparently, I don't know how the people feel about it. Thanks for listening to me.
Lauren.
Yeah, I, I agree. We won't share data under that circumstance either. Or UConn.
Lauren, could you just cover why? What's the, what's the concern?
From a data security perspective, I feel like it's extra, well, first of all, I was not in the office on Friday, so I had Dan Sokol sit in for me. So I probably missed some conversation, but it just seems like to not participate in a data request because every single agency has to have the extra review. So we should be able to choose for the extra review and still be able to participate in the data request. So it basically opts us out if it's not going to be a consensus on that, you know, extra step of OPM reviewing. So I, you know, just personally, being in institutional research for almost three decades, take FERPA and data privacy and security very seriously. So, you know, especially with recent breaches. That's just, I'm speaking for senior leadership at UConn as well. So I have to protect our data. So that's where I'm coming from.
Brian.
Thanks.
I have my hand raised.
Um, Jan, I thought that, I thought that your idea around, you know, enabling virtual review was a good idea and would get agencies kind of pass some of this. I'm interested to hear what others think of that as a, as a good compromise to, to, to get us, get us through the day.
There are a couple of hands up.
Eileen, you had a hand too, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, sure. No worries. Um, so I personally think that having that second review is incredibly important. I know it's another touch point. But getting a second opinion before release can really prevent problems that I have experienced, not through P20 win, but in other settings. And sometimes our rush to get things out can lead to human errors and it's, it's nobody's fault. But I would, I would value having OPM review the dataset and have, giving the agencies the option of reviewing the dataset before release. Because I've seen a few things happen, again, not, not here in Connecticut, but in other places that really created problems that could have been prevented if somebody else had reviewed the dataset prior to release. Speaking from experience. And with all good intentions, of course, I mean, the person wasn't, wasn't being overly sloppy, but they didn't consider certain elements that, in my opinion, need to be considered prior to releasing a dataset.
Thanks, Eileen.
I can cover the, oh, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna ask, when we talk about virtual review, are we talking about like having a Teams meeting and screen sharing and just having OPM look over the file structures? Like looking over the shoulder of the agency? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what I had in mind.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it definitely prevents, I mean, it's, yeah, so the, the data itself is not moving in that perspective. There is literally other eyes on it. So you'd still have to probably address that in the DSA, but as long as that's addressed in the DSA, takes care of that. Of course, the, in the proposed process, right? The data is already moved to the, to the date, to the hub, right? And that's where OPM would be looking at it. Is that correct? Or is it moving again to OPM?
It would be moving again because the analytic data hasn't moved anywhere yet.
Okay.
Sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Is that right, Scott?
No, go ahead, Jan. Yeah, that's, sort of, I, I don't think I would say it the way you said it, Jan. It's not moving again. It's moving, each time it's moving once, the matching data moves once to Department of Labor, the analytic data moves once to OPM. So the data moves separately, preserves separation of the matching data, the analytic data, and each takes one hop. Then the additional hop is the key file goes from DOL to OPM, but it doesn't have the direct identifiers in it. It's just the fake IDs at that point. So it doesn't increase the overall movement of data, other than that one additional hop for the key file from Labor to OPM. Just, to just address the, the option of the virtual screen sharing option. So this is something that we considered and had some debate before the Data Governing Board meeting. It did not propose it because we ultimately felt like it did not sort of address the underlying issues sufficiently and it provided some, created some new challenges with it. I don't think it's a, it's a plausible idea. It is something we could add into the process, but it does create some other issues in, you know, what we had reviewed. So as I think Fred said, we would, and Jan, to your comment earlier, we would also have to modify the data sharing agreements for this. The, the data is being exposed to us, so it would not, you know, remove the need to change the legal agreements, even if it's not moving into, you know, a different space, like we're still seeing it. It would be exposed to us through a method that is much harder to secure than the current methods where we use FTP, have encryption. Screen sharing is, I think, less secure than if we used the existing file transfer methods. There's very little control over who has access to screen, your ability to do screen capture, that kind of thing. So you're exposing it with a method that has less security controls associated with it. And then it doesn't provide the benefits really for data quality or data minimization that we think are sort of byproducts of the process here. So I think it, it has some additional risks associated with it. It's some of these same steps and it has some, it doesn't provide some of the benefits that we get through this with that sort of second set of eyes and be able to look at the, the data quality issues and the minimization, the dataset as a whole. Having said that, you know, again, like it's a plausible method. I think we could consider adding this into something, but I wouldn't do it in isolation. It doesn't address the problems sufficiently. And that's, again, that's why we didn't propose it. So we considered this, debated it, opted not to propose it in the plan because we didn't feel like it fully addressed the issues.
Brian.
Yeah, I, I don't understand, you know, definitely, there's, I understand, I'm just wondering if, I, I do agree that, you know, the extra set of eyes on what would be sent is, you know, useful. Could we do this, you know, this review, using only the metadata, right? So if we were just sort of forwarding column names and definitions. I mean, it's sort of a, you know, some of that is still going to be back on the, 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 the agency providing the data to make sure that what's in the columns actually matches what, you know, what the descriptors are. But that may be, that maybe we're in it around it. I, I think it's not, it's not perfect, right? We're not checking to make sure that like, you know, you know, city values don't have social security numbers in them. But I mean, I think that that's, you know, that's, it's, could, could be a step in, in the right direction.
I'm just gonna unmute and cover this. I think Jan does the same in the comment. So this is another idea that I think is like a, a reasonable, plausible idea that we debated and did not put in the plan. This is essentially what we have put in place after the first set of security incidents, was sharing the column level as much metadata as we could on the files to document and log it. And after doing that, we still had a human error creep through. So it, to me, like, it seems like a good idea. It seemed like a good idea at the time. I think just testing this process out with the volume of data and the number of files, like, it's, it hasn't been sufficient. Again, like totally plausible idea, makes sense, has not worked in practice.
Thanks.
Sorry. I don't want to be that like bearer of bad news, but we, we put some time into like vetting some of these beforehand. And I think that's for, the reason for doing the dry run and, and kind of carefully observing the requests that have gone through in the, the last year. And us and DOL have spent a bunch of time going back through those and figuring out, you know, what were the issues, what, what kind of crept up? Fred? I'm just talking, so.
Two, two things. One, we're already sharing the file structure in the transmission log process. So we're already doing that. Presumably, you're checking that when you see it, right? To make sure, of course, data is already moved at that point because we've transmitted it. But at any rate, I, I did want to push though a little bit, Scott, on, on the, how unwieldy it would be to have some, but not all opt into the disclosure review in any given project. I mean, it's, it's just checking the DSAs at the outset, who's in, who's out, and do it for those who are in. It doesn't seem to me to be that big a burden. So to, to kind of hold the whole process hostage to a, you know, all or nothing, doesn't really seem, it, I don't know, I just, it doesn't seem to be that big a deal. And I, I would think we could, you could handle that.
Yeah, I just say we debated this and I'm gonna lean on colleagues who were part of that. And I don't, you know, we just felt like, okay, this is going to be complicated. It doesn't mean that that's the, the, you know, final word for it. But our, you know, judgment after, I don't know, 24 hours of thinking, this was like, this is going to be sort of a mess to, to do. The other option, I mean, we could, again, you know, we could amend the language if people are comfortable with that, proceed with the plan and the matching process that is in a way that it's sort of, you know, optional by agency. And move forward with that. Like we said last time, you know, again, we, we developed these policies, but they can and should be modified over time. And to use the example of the file transfer log, last time we had an incident, we thought, all right, documenting the metadata will help us, you know, address these incidents in the future. We did that and it didn't work. And so like, we'll try this and see. And if it doesn't work, we'll be back again debating some other option here. And I, that, you know, the, the, the reasons for, you know, and I, again, if, I don't know, Patrick, Katie, Ashley, and you that were in the discussions on this, if there's something you remember that I'm not gonna call up. But it was just thinking through some of the requests. I think we're particularly thinking through some of the ones recently where there's, you know, dozens of files, you know, multiple different matches that are occurring, sort of having to like, track that level of whether, you know, is this particular file and is that particular file? And like, that's going to be administratively complex. But I think for straightforward requests, it's probably more easy to administer. That's, I don't know, that's my recollection of it.
Yeah, I just want to concur with Eileen, who I think succinctly laid out the benefits of a second review. So as an, as an executive agency, we don't have an issue with that process and we would jump into that. At the same time, I do agree with Fred that if our IHE colleagues have concerns about that, then I, you know, obviously we need them as partners in this and I don't, I don't want to, like, not have that partnership continue. So you know, if it means a separate meeting with our IHE colleagues to sort of work out whatever language might be comfortable for them to make this possible, I would encourage that we consider that. Unless there's some other option, which I'm not aware of, but given who's around the table here, I would say that's what seems like a reasonable course of action to me. Because I, I do agree with Eileen that the approach makes sense. As an executive agency, we would sign on for that review.
Scott, did you raise your hand?
I raised my hand by accident and also apparently unmuted by accident, which I didn't mean to do. So, it's a lot of buttons. In the interest of like time and kind of moving this forward, we would like to be able to resolve these issues and work out with our colleagues in higher education, how they would like to participate in this endeavor going forward. Then perhaps we take the, what I would suggest is the first sentence from Jan's comment in the chat, any agency can then notify OPM, they would like the, their own agency's data to go through a disclosure review, amend the amended version with that sentence. I would leave the sentence that agencies cannot obligate other agencies to participate in the disclosure review by OPM, because it is the case that agencies cannot obligate other agencies to do anything in this. And I don't think that needs to be restated. But if we take that first sentence and put it into the amended version, folks are comfortable. Proceeding with that, we can either vote on an amended version, I believe, or call another special meeting, which I'm somewhat loathe to do. But that'd be my suggestion based on this. Jan, have your hand raised?
Jan, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you, Scott. For clarity, I hear you saying that you would add a sentence or modify the language to say any agency can notify OPM, they would like their own agency's data to go through this process. But in practice, that's not going to be the expectation. In practice, the expectation is that for any request, all agencies must approve to the data disclosure process, or it's just, or the request isn't happening. That's what I'm hearing saying in the dialogue. Am I, is that accurate?
I think I heard Scott become open to the notion that it's not all or nothing, that it's individual agency option. Is that correct, Scott? And that's your intent?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. If it's, if it's tolerable that an agency can ask for their own data to be reviewed, then we're on board with that.
Okay, is there a motion to amend the language?
Move as amended.
There's a second. So moves by Rom, seconded by Fred? Okay. Okay, so voice vote to approve the language as amended, and then we'll go into another discussion if need to, if we need to. So.
And just to, just to clarify, Katie, what we're voting on is the language that Jan proposed.
Correct.
Basically to, okay, which would be an agency by agency selection. Okay, just want to be clear.
I think I got this in the document, agencies, any agency can then notify.
Yeah, we are using the language that Jan put in the chat. Okay, so can we vote on this before folks start dropping off? We'll do a roll call vote. Rom.
Aye.
Bob. Joe. Patrick.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Michael. Ajit.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Rose.
Aye.
Jan.
Aye.
Eileen.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Maura.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. So the motion passes. And we will begin to put this plan into effect. We will report back, obviously, letting you know what's working, maybe what needs to be improved as we face new and different obstacles. But thank you all for participating in this meeting. New and different obstacles, but thank you all for, um, participating in this meeting, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great day, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.